I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, May 16, 2017. The time is now 7:43. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 1, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2, 2016, issue of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Communications, Madam Clerk?
Yes. The Friends of Nutley Library have submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their evening tea and book signing event on Wednesday, May 17, 2017, at the Nutley Public Library from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Education Foundation has submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their showcase awards event on Wednesday, June 14, 2017, at the Nutley Museum, located at 65 Church Street, between the hours of 6:30 p.m. and 8:30 p.m. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Chief of Police.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Jim Dandy of Nutley LLC, GLO Group LLC, trading as Belaluce, and the Forum LLC, trading as Cubanel, have submitted applications for an extension of premises to participate in a spring concert on Franklin Avenue on Thursday, June 15, 2017, between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. Their applications have been reviewed and approved by the Chief of Police. The rain date is Friday, June 16, 2017.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Move it.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for May 16, 2017. Public Affairs, $93,641.75. Revenue and Finance, $3,161,208.39. Public Safety, $35,030.24. Public Works, $452,588.53. Parks and Public Property, $99,997.80. Total Payroll, $820,407.28, for a grand total of $4,662,873.99.
Move the bill. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only?
First, I'm using my new mic. Penny Lantry, 135 Lakeside Drive, on the bill list, which was an agenda item, I have a question about purchase order 1701-233. Vendor is Nutley Free Library, and it was a bill through Public Works for $406,000. What would that be for?
Ms. Lanry, that's paid out of the Mayor's office, and that's our portion to the library to help fund them through tax dollars.
So is this the transitional aid?
No.
Okay, so...
It's just that the money we collect in taxes, part of that money goes to fund the library. That's the portion. I'm assuming it goes quarterly?
Okay, so the library...
Wait, what's the mayor? I believe that's statutory if required to make that payment.
Okay. I was just wondering why it came out of Public Works.
Comes out of the Mayor's office.
So it's listed, there's no column here for Mayor's office?
No.
Will we split that out of the bill list in the future, given that it's a different department?
It's not a different department. It's only five departments.
Okay, so Public Works and Mayor's Department are consolidated?
Yeah.
Because I think it's listed separately on the budget. I'm just wondering why it's not listed separately.
Ms. Lanry, we'll look into that, all right?
Okay. I'd like to make a request that it be looked into. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the Board on agenda items only? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting? Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Resolution number 115-17. Excuse me, are we skipping over Board of Commissioner announcements?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I just have two quick ones. This Friday evening, we're holding our annual Relay for Life at the Muro Park. It begins at 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday morning, at 8:30 a.m., we will be holding our fishing contest that has been postponed for the last two weeks because of weather. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other Commissioner announcements?
I do, Mayor. I know we've been talking a lot about our parking situation, with the commuting parking and the Hoffman Road site, the two-hour parking. I know I mentioned about decals, all that stuff. So this past week, with our traffic safety police officer and my assistant, Sam Corolla, I went to Highfield Lane, because we had them on as far as passing that two-hour. And I don't know if you remember, that gentleman spoke and asked some questions at the mic. While I was there, I saw what a burden it is on the residents, because people are really clogging up those streets, the commuters, and to the city. And instead of going to a decal, because I know that, you know, we are concerned about that, is the word, we're concerned about that, I was wondering if, and we could discuss this, but I'm just saying this on the mic, because I know Edison Avenue has been in my store and asking me what's going on with it. I was wondering if maybe the solution, instead of a decal, if we could try something with the two-hour parking from like, maybe 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., because that's when it seems like everybody's parking there for those hours, or maybe till noon. And then instead of going to a decal, it would give the residents a right to park in front of their houses the rest of the way. Was this a bell that went off in my head at that time when I visited the site? So I think it's just something to think of, because I do want to take some type of action very soon, because people are asking me what's going on with that. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Rogers?
I have an announcement.
An announcement?
Yeah. Sunday at 4:00 p.m., the 21st of May, we will be holding our annual POW MIA service at St. Mary's Church, always well attended. And it's a great thing to see World War II vets who live in this town come and receive medals and be honored, so the public is invited. Each Commissioner, you were invited, and a letter was sent to your office.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Ready?
Resolution.
Here we go. Resolution number 115-17, recognizing May 14 through May 20 as National Women's Health Week. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I do. Resolution 116-17, be resolved. Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and the Treasury, and GFC, hereby authorized, to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $2,467.31 for lot 2400, lot 22. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Petracca?
Yes. Whereas sealed bids for furnishing and delivering police dispatch and crossguard uniforms and equipment were publicly open and read on April 26, 2017, whereas turnout uniforms was the lowest bidder, and whereas the funds in the amount of $48,000 are available in appropriation titled 7-01-310-200, Police and Dispatch Maintenance and Allowance, and the funds in the amount of $12,500 are available in appropriation titled 7-01-308-200, Cross and Guards Allowance, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the contract for furnishing and delivering police dispatch and crossguard uniforms and equipment consistent with the 2017 clothing voucher allocation be and is hereby awarded to turnout uniforms, 195 Patterson Ave., Little Falls, New Jersey, 07424. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle application has been received from the following organization, Essex County PEA Conference Scholarship Fund, license number 2817, Off-Premise 50/50 KS Raffle, to be held on Thursday, November 30, 2017. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is approved, and Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the 2017 roadway improvements in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, June 14, 2017, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time, at which time they'll be open and read. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas public works services provided by the Township of Nutley are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, to hereby proclaim the week of May 21, 2017, as National Public Works Week, and the Township of Nutley call upon all citizens, civil organizations, to equate themselves with the issues of providing public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day in our health, safety, comfort, and quality. I'll have to move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, will you read the announcement?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
In the written conditions to closing on Davis property, there was a stipulation that there be a valid and filed easement for the property to Church Street. Why was that stipulation put in?
Mr. Janet Tempo?
You talking about the easement going out to Church Street?
Yeah.
First, let me, Mayor, may I comment on another issue? I wanted to apologize for the last meeting. I was insistent on the closing date, and I was wrong, and you were right, and I apologize. I confused it with the other closing, and I do apologize. I wanted to publicly apologize, because you were right.
Appreciate that.
As to your question, I'm not sure. I have to take a look at it. It showed up on the map relative to the area map of the survey of the property, and we wanted to maintain that easement, if it existed, for the property. There may be an issue as to whether that easement belongs to that prop, to the property purchased, or to the properties in front of it. You know what I'm saying? And so I'm actually looking at that. But I, my understanding is that, according to the survey, it was recorded as an easement for the Davis property. So whether or not that will be an ingress or egress easement at some point, we don't know.
The reason for the question is because in there it said that contract would become void if it wasn't proven that it was an easement or not.
Well, that representation usually would only last until closing.
Right.
And then the representation of the system.
But I figured then you would know whether...
Right. We did title work, and we did a title search, and it came up on the survey, so we're pretty confident that it is.
Okay. In February 2013, the Davis property passed their fire inspection. Then they failed in July of 2014 for having a windowless basement without a supervised automatic sprinkler system. How was it possible for it to pass in 2013 and not in 2014?
It's possible, because the only reason that, I understand it was violated in 14, was because there was now things stored in the basement that were potentially inflammable. So that, did I say inflammable? Flammable. And I think, I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, that that was one of the reasons why they were violated. And that was emptied when he left. The basement was completely emptied. But we still, obviously, as you know from last meeting, I felt it still needed to be installed, and that's what was done.
Well, because the fire...
Not timely, but later.
But the fire code specifies that it needs to be installed, does it not?
I'm not an expert on the fire code. I'm only telling you what I know historically from what I was told about the property. I'm not an expert on the fire code.
Well, I have the fire code here.
I'm not going to dispute you, because you have it in front of you.
And it does, it does say that it is required, and so did it say that it was required in the report from the Fire Commissioner. So I would say that is all well and fine, but that still doesn't answer the question of how it could have passed a windowless basement in 2013 with no fire suppression system, and then in 2014 it did pass. Or opposite, sorry.
I don't know the answer. I really don't.
Okay. On February 26, 2016, Davis Attorney wrote to Mr. Janet Tempo, stating that the property would be sold as is, and that they would not be installing the required fire system. Following day, Mr. Janet Tempo's office wrote to Commissioner Evans, specifically bringing his attention to this matter. Can you tell us what Commissioner Evans' response was to this letter?
No, any conversations between the Commissioner and I would be attorney-client privilege. I don't actually remember. I can tell you that much. And the purpose of the letter was obviously to identify what the terms were of the contract, which are clear in the letter that you received by way of the Oprah request. But I don't remember any conversation, frankly.
Did Commissioner Evans consult any other Commissioners or the Mayor regarding this?
You're asking me? I'm sorry.
Asking the Mayor.
What date was that?
It was February 26, so it would have been sometime after that, of 2016.
I wasn't Mayor until May.
Right. Go once you're... You were a Commissioner. You were a Commissioner before that, though.
I don't remember getting any communication.
So...
Don't recall any communication.
He didn't consult with anybody. So why did he not consult with the other Commissioners on that matter? And did he make a unilateral decision then on his own?
I don't know what decision you're referring to, Mr. Henning.
The decision of the letter was...
Excuse me, wait, let me finish. Obviously, we were negotiating a contract for the purchase of the property. At the time, everything was confidential, as you know, when we're dealing with a contract. We had multiple conversations with Commissioner Evans, who was spearheading the purchase on behalf of the Township, and I don't recall every conversation. I don't know if the Commissioner does. But we had multiple conversations about the terms of the contract. You have a copy of the final draft that was signed. Those are, the documents are the best recollection of what happened.
One more question, Mr. Henning.
You want me to keep coming back?
One more question.
You want me to keep coming back?
No.
Every two weeks to get this out? I have a bunch of questions on this property that should be answered.
We have five minutes.
Mr. Henning, we have a five-minute rule, Mr. Henning, and we try to keep to it. I'm giving you one more chance. So, go.
If you want, after I'm done, you can go up and read my questions. An application for zoning certificate for the resale of Davis property was submitted on January 15, 2016, without there being an answer to the question to, is there a fire alarm present?
What's your question?
The application for the zoning certificate for the resale of Davis property was submitted on January 15, 2016, without there being an answer to the question, is there a fire alarm present, and with no signature. Wouldn't or shouldn't such an application be rejected as incomplete?
Mr. Henning, I'm not sure I understand the purpose of your questions. Are you just trying to point out that perhaps... Let me finish. I'm talking, I'm answering your question. Are you asking whether everything was done 100% the way you want it to be? I don't think so. We've had this discussion offline. You can go through every single document if you want, but the answer's the same. We knew there was a violation. We got a concession from the seller to have it installed. It didn't get done right away. We finally got it done. It's now been installed. I'm not really sure what the purpose of your questions are. Obviously, you can ask them. But I don't know what document referring to. I wasn't involved with it. I didn't complete the document. It's a zoning document. If you want to show it to me later, I'll be call zoning and see if I can get an answer for you.
I guess the question is, there's been a lot of shoddy work done here. That's the point of these questions. It wasn't one department that dropped the ball on this. It was multiple departments. It was the Commissioners. It was you. It was the building and grounds. It was code enforcement. And it was the Fire Department. That's a lot of government issues over a three-year period. So that's the point of the questions.
Okay.
Is to try and get to the bottom of how this could happen, and how do we make it where it does not happen again, and we're insured that there's none of these out there now. That's the point of the question. That's the point of these questions. Now, I can keep coming back every two weeks until I get to the bottom of all the questions, or we can do it tonight. I'll leave that up to the Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henning.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. I'm sorry, what is this for? Is this important?
Yes. Could you please put that down? Put that down.
I just want to know what it was. Mr. Scarpelli, Mr. Evans has been calling in quite a few times by phone. I believe that's because he has an ailment that's bothering him. Is there a reason that the general public would not be able to call in and put a question on the record through the phones in a similar fashion?
Mr. Janet Tempo, you have an answer to that?
No, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know if it's ever been attempted or done, or whether there's, I don't know that there's any prohibition against it.
I believe they're doing something like in Bellevue. Mr. Tucci could attest whether or not they do that or not.
Doing what, Mr. Moore?
They can call in on a phone. A handicapped individual wants to attend a meeting. They can call in in a similar fashion and listen. And if they wanted to, they can go on the record with a question.
I'm not aware of that, of that ever happening.
I believe Bellevue...
I'm not saying it didn't. I'm just saying I'm not aware of it.
Okay, okay. That's fine. But under the handicap law, I believe that you've now opened the door to allow handicapped individuals to call in in a similar fashion, and should be able to pose a question on the record if they want to.
Interesting question.
Is that a question, Mr. Moore?
Yes, it is a question. We'll...
We'll have Mr. Janet Tempo look into that.
I don't think he's the techy expert on this one, but there is a similar, there is a system that allows an individual to call in, as right now, and they would be able to hear the record as everybody would speak, at a time for the questioning. They would be able to be added into the record in a question mode. It's done on the Internet all the time. Very simple. But now you've opened this door to allow this to happen, because you now have a system that is available to handicapped individuals. When would it be?
I just said to you, we're going to have Mr. Janet Tempo look into it.
Good. I'll come back up again next time and ask the question.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Gregory Palmer, 119 Church Street. I was here just about a year ago, and I started my comments by stating I wasn't here to put anyone on the spot, that I waited till after the election, so there was no negativity involved. And I'm here again because nothing has taken place since then. And this is regarding the Clover Street property and the decaying chicken coops and sheds that are there, and how literally myself and my neighbors cannot use our backyards because of the infestation of mosquitoes. County mosquito control has been out numerous times. They've actually fogged the entire neighborhood, and they said until that property is cleared, this problem will continue. Now with the rains that we've had, I can only imagine how bad it's going to be this year. I am not exaggerating when I say we're smacking three, four, five at a time. They haven't started yet, but that's how bad it is. And these are even neighbors, I live on 119 Church Street, the property's behind me and to my left facing my house, but even my neighbors across the street have the same problem. the street have the same problem. So this is a huge problem. I'm here for assistance. I do realize, as some have said, that if myself and the neighbors didn't challenge the development that was going to go in there, this all would have been over. However, if the planning board had done the right thing and didn't, well, I won't even get into the whole summary of it. But if things were done the proper way, this all would have been over with. If the township had taken the county executives' offer of funding to make it a park, this would have been over with. So there's a lot of ifs involved. And whereas yesterday was seven years since my father's passing, if the frog had wings, he wouldn't bump his rear end every time he jumped. And I'll leave the one about the queen out of this, as my father was fond of saying. So there's a lot of ifs involved. The bottom line is, we pay a lot of taxes, and we literally cannot use our backyards. So whoever responsibility this is, whether it's Health Department, Code Enforcement, please, we're looking for some relief here. We want to be able to use our yards this upcoming season. Just the last thing regarding this development. When the four houses were proposed, I spoke on behalf of the neighbors thanking the developer for reducing it to four houses, stating we had no problem with the four houses, and the developer said he would immediately clear the property. I think that was three or four years ago. In the meantime, these big old chicken coops and sheds, the roofs have collapsed, and hence the problem of the mosquitoes. So I'm here asking for help.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, he, he is absolutely correct. He has been very, very patient. I, I've been up there myself last year. We have the, we have the Health Office go up there, the County go up there, and everything he's saying is absolutely on target. So, but there's nothing I can do to, to, you know, remove that stuff. But it is a sore eye. It's a, it's not good for any neighborhood, so maybe something we could figure out.
So is this a property maintenance issue?
Well, it could be. Maybe it's the owner. Whoever owns that property needs to, needs to step up and take care of that. I mean, we're powerless. At least I am in the Health Department, so.
I've heard of things in the past that the town could tear properties down and put a lien on it. If that's what needs to be done, I, I mean, we really need some relief here.
Mr. Janet Tempo, could we look into who owns the property?
Sure.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, may I just say I can respond. Greg, I did pick up your message actually a little bit earlier this evening. I've been checking my messages as I can, so I am not ignoring you. I will notify the Code Office tomorrow to do a property maintenance inspection, and yes, if there is something that is on the property that could be, could endanger, could be danger to citizens, we'll make sure we address that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Henry Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. Interesting that today is May 16, 2017, and a significant date last year was May 17, 2016. It was the date each of you gentlemen took your oath of office after the election. I congratulate you on a year of service to our town, and I have a question that I'm hoping each of you will answer on the anniversary of your one year as Commissioners and as Mayor. To each of you, starting with the Mayor, what is your number-one priority that you hope to accomplish for your constituency, for the taxpayers, for the citizens of Nutley in the next 12 months of service?
I didn't know we were going to get, have a debate tonight. What I'd like, Ms. Landry, is that the Roche property get redeveloped and we replace all the ratables that were lost when Roche left us.
I like that one. Anyone else?
I would really like, sir. I would really like to maintain our services because we in this community have a, have a statewide, if not a national-wide, reputation of having great services for citizens of all ages, et cetera. But at the same time, to, at the very least stabilize our taxes, and I believe every Commissioner is on board with that, but that's so very important, so kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. But that's what I'd like to do.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Sure, Commissioner.
I have a question. One, thank you for asking. I think it's a very important question, and I think it's, it's always valuable to have time to reflect. And so I didn't actually prepare anything for tonight in anticipation of questions. But I would tell you that from my standpoint, making sure that, as the Mayor says, that we continue to focus on the transition of the Roche property, I think that's paramount, not, also, we are benefactors of $5.5 million worth of aid that provides a tax relief not only for the municipal side of the government, but also relief for our school as well as the county. As you know, 100% relief for the tax bill. So for me, making sure that we are able to retain that aid and ultimately see, see the light where either Roche provides us with the revenue we need, that is, looking at our future and making sure Nutley remains and continues to be a vibrant place, not only for our existing generation or historical generation, but for future generations that might find Nutley attractive. Making sure we're doing that so that we can ultimately achieve a fair tax and always could be guided by recognizing that we need to watch our penny. So for me, not losing that state aid, especially as we transition to the next administration, remains a significant priority for me.
Right. If you were here, I'd hug you if you're saying that we actually received the same 5.5 as we did last year as opposed to the 4.6 that we were anticipating.
Well, I'm hoping, maybe hope that maybe you can hug me and Jim.
I look forward to that.
Commissioner Petrako?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, I was the Mayor at the time when Roche gave their notice that they were leaving, and as I always said, I thought it was a joke when we first found that. Actually, Moore, Tucci was the first one to call me. Remember, Moore?
Yes, I do.
About someone even computer notifying him. So obviously, I would really like to see that Roche property, you know, flourish for us and really get what we want there and see that through. I also think that the communication between our Board and what we do up here to the residents, I would like to really see our residents get a full picture of what we're trying to accomplish. This is past weekend. Is my time up? Okay.
Your time is up.
Okay.
You always give me extra time.
It's not, it's not so much fun when you're on this side of the mic and your time gets shut down, but thank you for extending it. However, I talked to Commissioner Evans over the weekend about a resident that came in my store, and he said to me, you know, geez, I can't believe all these apartments and why are you guys doing so much building? And, you know, I've been from Nutley my whole life, and I know you're from Nutley your whole life, and, you know, what's the story here? And, you know, why is this stuff taking place? And as I said to him, you know, I grew up in this town too, and I don't want to see the characteristics change at all, but the fact is, is after I explained to him what was at stake at Roche, what we were collecting in a ratable, you know, thank God for the transitional aid, but if that goes away, and what the projections are at Roche for the future collectibles might not be what Roche was paying, and we were trying to fill a hole in our budget, this way the taxes don't, do not keep increasing at the rate that they are. And it was very important for me to notify this gentleman and other residents that I've speak to about that. You know, we don't want to change the characteristics of the town, however, you can't not cover, I'm sorry, you can't not expand your ratables and think taxes are going to stay the same or go down. So as salaries go up and all the costs and the benefits, like I said at the last meeting, it's really what I've always tried to do is strike a balance, you know, where the taxes aren't going up, that we're chasing every senior citizen out of here, and you know what? If we have to do some development to give them relief and have them stay in our community and even make it attractive for our young people to stay here, our children to stay here. Because as we all know, in our neighboring towns, what has happened is the children, especially in my age group, didn't rebuy in those towns, and look what happened. So, you know, it's, to me, it's all about striking a balance, preserving what we have here, and really getting our message back out there so people understand why we are doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I'll finish this up. As the steward of the parks and public property, obviously, one of my main priorities is to maintain the 110 acres of parkland that we have and all the public buildings that we have, all the programs that we offer, and to expand the programs, not only for our youth, but for our seniors and everyone in between. Obviously, the repurposing and redevelopment of Hoffman La Roche, as Commissioner Petrako stated, we started that several years ago. It's continuing on under Mayor Scarpelli and the rest of the Commissioners, so we need to make sure that that's done and that's done right so that future generations can benefit from that. I think we need to think about the entire school overcrowding issue and how we address that and how we communicate that with the Board, even though they are a separate Board making their own decisions. I think we need to pay attention very carefully and make sure that those decisions are the right ones for future generations. Affordability is always an issue. Tax relief is always an issue, all right? And I think honest and open government, all right, is paramount to this town continuing to thrive.
Thank you, and I look forward to a townwide update on the PRISM redevelopment on three very soon, because I know PRISM has said they had planned one, and I hope it will be a collaborative effort between the PRISM redevelopment group and our Township leaders. Thank you very much, and good luck in the next 12 months.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Motion to go into executive.
Motion to close.
Second.
Go to executive.
Motion to.
Going to executive.
Move it.
On issues of potential litigation and contract negotiation.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of public for meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey desires to proceed to closed executive session, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss potential litigation and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that at a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Time is 24.
We will be coming back into public session. No action will be taken.
Sal, you going to take the phone inside or you have to disconnect it?